Man, you?
He says he can hear us. What he said? The lights usually come on when we have a conference.
We'll get started in just a minute.
Give me a test one, test two, Bobby. Powering up, initial out. Come on, I'm blocking. What's always false?
You don't block it?
I didn't.
There we go. It's low, it's low, I don't. That's just the sound. What do they call it?
Curse of the street. Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Testing. Testing.
You had it there for a minute.
It's working.
We got it.
Okay. Michelle, yours?
Yes.
Everybody ready?
Ready.
It's your feedback, too. You get a lot of feedback.
Well, go ahead.
Yes.
Testing, testing, testing. Timmy?
Good. Good, yeah.
Greg, yours?
This truck.
We'll try again. Call meeting to order August the 5th, Monday. We'll pledge allegiance and stand for a moment of silence, please. Steve, you want to lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Y'all be seated. We have the agenda before us. We've had it for several days. Need a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Daniel? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. The agenda is set. Have public comments section, and one person has signed up. Ricky McGrady, if you come forward, state your name, please. And you have three minutes. I'll, if you take the time, I'll let you know.
My name is Ricky McGrady. I just wondered what's going on with this $7 million, you know? Why, why they needing it? When I pay taxes every year and they're, and how much are y'all getting out of taxes every year? I'm getting, you getting $3 million every year? I mean, people's out here and ain't got money as it is, and it just keeps on going up and up and up. Every time you turn around, it keeps on going up, you know? And, and it's a bunch of bull crap. I went to school, when I went to school, the building was about ready to fall down to the ground. And they didn't, nobody could come in there and build that school, you know? That's what I don't understand. Well, what's going on? You know, everybody should pay their fair share of taxes, and they don't do it in this country. That's why it's wrong for this country today. They don't pay their fair share of taxes. And, and it's left up, it's like living in communism, where the other people has to, to pay, pay the difference. It's the way I look at it, is communism.
That all?
That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything to say? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public comments at this time. Thank you for those words. First up is presentation to the board, Soil and Water. Chelsea, I believe you're up. Pull it. There you go.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm Chelsea Bobbitt with Soil and Water. I'm here on behalf of Soil and Water Department to give you guys an update on what's going on with Soil and Water. So, the first thing is, this week, we are starting to put bookcases into the school systems that were funded by the Foundation of Soil and Water and with community support. So, we were granted $5,550 to build 11 bookcases, and Ponty Creek and Glade Creek will receive the first nine bookcases. They were built by Carolina Farm Table, and then myself and a couple other Soil and Water individuals painted the book barns, and the teachers will get a yearly subscription to Ag in the Classroom sponsored by Farm Bureau, where they get ag-related books to put in these bookshelves for the kids to read. The next thing is, we got a grant for a brand-new 300-gallon boom sprayer that was also funded by the Foundation of Soil and Water, and then Soil and Water Board put some money towards it. So, it's ready and available to rent out to the community. We also have a soils tent. This has all kinds of different soil biology, soil horizons on all six sides of the tent for kids to go around and look at, so it'll be set up at the fair and different events that we do. So, it was also grant money through the foundation, and then the board put some money towards it. So, as of right now, we have $15,000 worth of grant money of equipment that we have just received. Then we have a couple upcoming events that we're doing. The first one is our Field Day and Appreciation Lunch for anybody in the community, and mainly for our farmers to show our appreciation to what they do for our community. Put one of these flyers in all your mailboxes a couple weeks ago, so we hope you can come out and join us for that on the 16th. The next thing is our 16th Annual County Envire-thon. This is open for 5th grade through 12th graders. They compete, and once they compete county level, they move on to the area level and compete against 12 other counties. Then from there, they go to state, and we were fortunate enough to send seven middle school teams to state last, this past April. Our next event is our Second Annual 5th Grade Conservation Day. Like I said, this is our second one, and for 5th graders, and the kids love getting to come out and learn everything conservation. Then our last thing is, we just got our 2025 allocations for our technical side. So, our cost share program got $50,555. Our Ag Wrap program got $10,550. Our impaired and impacted streams got $11,379. And then our stream debris removal program, for just debris removal, we got $214,289. And then for South Pacific, we got $100,000. And all of that money has already been allocated, which we're very thankful for, and those projects will start in the upcoming months. Any questions?
Questions?
No. Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, item number two, Steve Mason, TDA.
Thank you. I think you've got a copy of the...
He pulled that up just a little.
I think you guys have a copy of the annual report. Just to go over a real quick review-wise for the TDA. This, the overview of the first page there, this year stayed fairly consistent with the tax revenues for the occupancy tax from last year. The numbers there were 208, 271, 39, in comparison to last year's of 214,632. So, they stayed pretty consistent, and we'll look at that in just a minute. But just wanted to share a couple things with you. There's just a highlighting there of some of the activity that we did with some of the long-range planning funds to help support projects for the county and the fairgrounds especially. Identified there were three projects in specific. The heating system at the Emerson Black Building, the new sound system and Wi-Fi at the fairgrounds, and then also development of secondary kitchen in Emerson Black Building. In addition, the board has also engaged in a wayfinding signage project and program that will, we're currently working with Destination by Design on this project, and have basically formed a committee of community leaders and also town and county representatives to support that and oversee that project. The TDA has taken the initial expense of that project and is ready to submit, and submitted the building proposals and the construction proposals for those signage issues to the town and county this fall. Probably will be ready sometime in September to be able to do that for review and approval. We'll be able to give you an option of taking a look at those signs, what's been developed so far, and what's been in design-build, and then also the opportunity for you guys to take a look and review those, as well as what the site designations are for those signs and where those locations are going to be. That committee's been working on basically three things, so I'm kind of tying into the next piece in there. But that, that opportunity is for us to look at where those signs are going to be located, and then identifying what is the transition from where it starts and then where it finishes. The, this will also be presented to the town tomorrow, and in relationship to that, those signs will actually start in town and work out into the county. The, that, that way, we have the opportunity to identify the things immediate first and then work out. There are some challenges that we're working with DOT. We'll be sharing more of that as we, it develops with us, and we'll give you an idea of what that looks like going forward. Also, just a, just a real quick closure there for the overview. This year, we've invested $331,236 in the community over this past year. So, we've tried, we've tried to really not only utilize the funds that we had coming in of that $208,000, but also utilize funds that we had in long-range planning to be able to initiate the program for the wayfinding signage, and then to invest more into the, into the fairgrounds. So, you'll look right there, or on that lower part of the page, the audited fund balance for this year was $323,237. You'll see your revenue, and then that also reflected on that next sheet over, which is our quarterly, in our annual report for our funding and fund balance. The, if you'll slide down, you can see we have no obligated responsibilities right now as it stands. And then on our long-range planning, we've allocated the $20,000, the $30,000, $25,000, $16,000 that were allocated from those years still have activity and have availability. So, we can utilize those. But if you look just down below that, we've invested others and, and trickled on up and working from the lowest and latest, or earliest numbers up to the latest numbers, which leaves a long-range balance of $91,000. If you go to Exhibit A, that just gives a reflection of your review of revenue and gives you an idea of what that looks like for the annual year. Exhibit B is a reflection of the total expenses and total by line item. And then Exhibit C is a reflection of the fourth quarter itself. And typically, we do first, second, third quarter, and then do we do an annual report? So, I give you an opportunity, and April was good to put that in there for us to reflect the expenses that we had in the fourth quarter. I would say there's a couple items there that, like, if you go down to about the midsection of that, there's funds that were allocated to Gary Finney. That was actually repair work to our stage at the fairgrounds, but that was allocated to him directly to work with the school to be able to do those repairs. Also, Destination by Design, that $16,250 is the first installment of the wayfinding signage. That project with Destination by Design is roughly a $75,000 project with them. Then if you go to Exhibit D, that's just a reflection of each incremental month and the summary of by month on revenue. Pretty, going back to that first statement, it's pretty consistent with last year's number at $214,000, being at $208,000. A few of the months were kind of a little adjusted, but for the most part, it's pretty consistent. And that's, unless there's any questions.
Any questions or comments for Steve? Hey, thank you for that one.
Thank you, okay.
Aren't you up again?
I am. But just a reflection, it really is just kind of touching on the wayfinding signage, and that's, that project is well, well in, and into its process, and I think we will have reflections for you guys to look at and, and layouts and, and design builds to look at in September. And we'll be bringing that back to you, and we'll be doing that also with the town.
Stay there?
Stay there, okay.
Any questions or comments on that? And that concludes Section A.
Right.
Now, we move to Section B, General Business. And there again, it's Steve Mason and Zach. There he is. About the fairgrounds, proposed fee structure changes, page 16 to 18.
Thanks for having us. So, when you're looking at the, if you've got a copy of it, was...
Start with y'all's?
I'm sorry.
You're going to start with y'all's sheet, or?
We can. It pretty much reflects a lot of what, I mean, we can, that'd be fine.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Okay.
That's it.
There you go. Go ahead, Zach. So, based on what was submitted to us from the Recreation Department, we went through and, and made some recommendations on just a few changes, not many. We looked at changing the additional days rented to certain groups that we call core groups of the, of the county, which is the Pie Festival, Fiber Fest, Fiddler's Convention, and the County Agriculture Fair. And these changes were made due based on the amount of setup time or tear-down time that it takes to, to put those events on. And it went from charging $200 a day additional for setup or tear-down to just charging the base fee of $1,200 per weekend for that event. And so, that was the only change there. And I think our other change that we made to the sound system deposit, we had a, we had a deposit of $250 for two hours and $50 an hour after that for each additional hour. And our thoughts were to include and, and remove the $50 an hour. Make it $200 and charge a $300 deposit with a refunded amount of 200 out of that to the event holder, which basically we made, you'll make $100 on the sound system per event, and which is basically what we're going to wind up with in the long run anyway, just a little less confusion on that part. And I think that was, that was the only real change to that, that we just, like I say, trying to keep it simple for the, for the folks trying to rent the fairgrounds and everything. That's all I've pretty much got.
Then in assistance in reviewing those applications, and i-if we get back into that relationship of reviewing those with, with the committee, the recommendations that also come to y'all based on what need assessment would be for each one of those events.
Yes.
In relationship to these fee structures.
And that could include, that could include the 200, the $200 a day additional fees.
And that's why I say that, because at the end of the day, if the event deems it needs the extra time, we can always, also, always recommend that it's so much a day after whatever additional days they need.
Per se, pretty much for for-profit events, if they need the additional time, that's where I would seek to, to make that money myself, instead of local charitable people and volunteers that have events there. You got anything else?
Anything else on that?
That's pretty much all I've got. That's pretty much it on our changes, if y'all have any questions for us.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
No. Do. So, so on the, the special consideration, so how much time does the Allegheny Fiddlers Convention use, like, set up to finish?
Well, and that's a, that's a good question, because I think the reality is, a lot of it hinges on weather, different things of that nature. But at the end of the day, we're kind of looking those, some of those events like that are being anchor events. As long as it doesn't influence the weekend before and the weekend after to have another event, we're going to try to have some leniency on what it takes for them on each side of that event to be able to set up and try to use good judgment in regards to doing that, so that at the end of the day, we're not hindering them or having to penalize them for days and pay for that, but at the same time, that's a, that's an anchor event for the facility, as long as we continue to condemn, deem it that way.
So, if we, just another question about that, because we know how long the Fiddlers Convention did from beginning to end.
Right.
Using this rate, what would that charge be next year?
Well, for them, it would be $1,200.
$1,200, just?
$1,200. Now, what we're saying is that, that $1,200 reflects from Wednesday, the Wednesday before to the Tuesday after.
Correct.
But a couple of these events need a, maybe a day before that, a day after that to set up or do what they've got to do. So, we're trying to give a little bit of leniency on those events. But, and if there was any other events that way, we would, we would give, advise you on that, but it's not, it doesn't have to be addressed in the fashion that we advise it. But we would, we would try to hold hard to these agreements based on what they are.
So, the, the other events is Agriculture Fair. So, basically, it'd be about the same amounts of money.
Yeah, there's a, there's an event in May, there's one in June, there's one in July, and there's one in August. So, those we kind of consider anchor, and they may all, always be anchor ones. They may be ones that, that fall out of that category based on what happens to it. They may be ones that, that fall out of that category based on what happens to it. If we get to a point where one of those events is not as, only sound as it, as it always has been, we can always look at adjusting that as well. But those are the ones we're confident in right now that are ones that we need to identify as that.
Looking through the, not the, any of the changes, but I was curious about, if you could explain the cleaning deposit, how that works, what the responsibility is of people who were renting the venue.
Well, I think that the thought process was here was to be able to identify in front, up forward, of whoever's renting that, they would have the responsibility of taking a look at the facility. If it's the way it should be, then all they're going to do is sign off that, that, you know, it's, it's the way it's supposed to be presented to me. If there's some concern, they can identify the concerns and write it in, and then we can either address those concerns or not based on the situation. But, but looking at it for that, they don't get dinged with something they didn't do. And then at the same time, they're, they're having the first look at this situation to see what it is they've got, how it needs to look when they finish.
And the other side of that's the event holder. If they hire someone to take care of the restrooms for their event, they need to make sure that they, they are in contact with those people all the time. And when that event's over, to a walk-through with the people that they hired to clean the restrooms and make sure it's done to the satisfaction of the fairgrounds.
They haven't cleaned the restrooms, then a certain amount comes out of the deposit. How is that, how do you figure what the five hundred dollars encompasses? What gets, stays with the county or?
We didn't actually get that deep into it, to be honest with you. But the reality is that does need to be determined based on that five hundred dollars and what, what portion of that's going to be held. We were fine with a deposit, because I think that, that's the deposit amount that gets your attention. But then at the same time, how much are you going to take back? You know, but I think what we need to do is we need to understand what it takes to clean that, what it costs us if we do it. That's what you retain, retain what it costs us to do it, and then ten percent to have to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Carter, or anything? Anything else?
No, all I would say too is, is we're currently working on the
Use Agreement.
Use Agreement itself, which was given back to us in our work session meeting and, and trying to weed out what does it need to be in there, put in what needs to be in there, address it, bring it back to y'all for review, and then take a look at that to be a partner with this, these fee structures.
And our, our next meeting next week should, should pretty much hit all that stuff on the head, and, and we'll have that back to you for y'all's next meeting. No problem.
Plus on top of that, some adjustments being made to the bylaws, and that will be submitted back to you too.
I think you've had some really good events here in the last few weeks.
Yeah, we, the, the weekend event this past weekend was a little, little tough, because the rain came right at the, right at the wrong time. But in addressing that, it is what it is, and we'll, we'll get through that.
That is?
That's it.
Thank you both. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it. Under Section B, this, for information, is a memo of understanding for security and safety at the BDC or Business Development Center, Mr. Carter, pages nineteen through twenty-one.
Board members, at a previous meeting, I identified that I had received a draft of this MOU from the BDC Board. And after having the opportunity to get the right people in the room together to talk it out, you now have a, a redefined agreement for consideration moving forward. And I will say that the changes that have been incorporated, the language that now reads, I find that to be sufficient for the operation. And at your next meeting, this, this agreement will be up for consideration. So at that point, I will make a recommendation for such.
Questions?
None.
Comments? Anything else, Mr. Carter?
On that?
Okay, thank you. Moving right along, Allegheny County EMS ambulance bid, page twenty-two through thirty-three.
I can take that one also. You, if you remember, we budgeted for a, an ambulance in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And through the solicitation of bids, you have three bids included in your packet. ETA put a price in of one eighty-five, two seventy-three, seventy-nine. The next one was from Statline, which is two oh-two, nine ninety-five, and the third one from Elite at two seventeen, four fifty. I will point out that these are similar to the ambulance that we bought this past year. These are new cabin chassis with a remanufactured body on it. In the budget, we budgeted two hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. So there is a significant savings recognized with these bids. And at your next meeting, the recommendation will be to go with ETA for one eighty-five, two seventy-three, seventy-nine.
Any questions, comments on that? Mr. Carter, is that it?
That's it on that.
Okay. Let's see, item number four, Landover Builder Agreement, Allegheny County High School Project, Mr. Carter, page thirty-four.
It's thirty-four, which is on the screen as well as in your packet. You have a very simple statement for the Department of Environmental Quality. In doing some of the permitting for the proposed new high school, it was recognized that Allegheny County actually owns some of the land that the school will be placed on. And by owning such, you have to have basically what you have in front of you as an agreement to allow for construction and/or whatever needs to be done to happen. So as we move forward with the school project, this, this item will be on your next agenda as well for consideration. But in order to, to be eligible to receive the proper permitting, this form will need to be completed.
Questions? Heather, you've looked over this, but I don't see a line for, usually you have a line for any of these legal documents. So I would just ask if, if it's needed or not.
It's not an agreement. We can, we can have her sign it if she'd like to, but it's not an agreement for contracts or anything of that nature.
As long as you're, you're okay with it.
I don't think there's any additional requirement that I'd be on here, but if you're, if you would like it, I'm sure we could add it. And that, it's not going to cause, there's no effect, you know, to have my name on there, something that's going to cause a problem, so.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, moving right along to item five. And Danielle, you'll get that on the budget, I mean, on the next agenda for action. At item four. Item five, Job Description, Deputy Tax Collector, April Hame, pages thirty-five through thirty-seven.
Good evening. Rita has submitted a updated job description for the deputy tax collector. We have someone in that office that's going to be retiring at the end of the year, and this is Rita's proactive approach to getting this updated, taking things out of it that doesn't need to be there any longer, plus updating it to up-to-date general statutes and things that need to be done in that, in that position. So do you have any questions about the job description?
Questions? Any other comments from anybody? Okay, thank you, April. Moving right along, these, we'll go to Section C. These items are for biz, for action under General Business, Allegheny County CTP, Mr. Carter, page thirty-eight through thirty-nine.
I will very quickly summarize, but I happened to look out in the audience and see some individuals here as well that I would more than like to have them come to the podium. But basically, on pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine, it is a summary that the, as the board is familiar, we have an ongoing consideration to revise our CTP plan. And the latest portion of that, you can find on page thirty-nine. Basically, it identifies the 2022 population and employment, and it goes and stretches out to 2050 to basically identify what the projected population and employment rate would be at that point. So if, if you would allow, I know David Graham and Ruben Crumley are here, and if anyone else is, they're welcome too, but I'd, I'd like to ask those two gentlemen to come forward.
Come right up, Mr. Carter. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman, County Commissioners. Appreciate y'all letting us be here. Good evening. Michael did a great job summarizing. I probably would have been a little more wordy. That's just how I am. As you all know, kind of working with me over the past couple of months. But yes, we're here to respectively request your approval of those population estimates that are on that second page, using a base year of 2022, population estimate of eleven, three twenty-four, and then a 2050 population estimate of eleven thousand, four fifty-three. And the twenty-two, excuse me, 2022 employment of four thousand, seven hundred and two, and then a projected employment rate of five thousand, four hundred and seven. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. If I don't know the answer, we've got Ruben Crumley here from NCDOT.
Questions, John? No questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, five oh. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chairman.
I will say with please.
Jim?
Yes.
Before you get to Items two through twenty-two, I would, I would ask that you allow April Hame to identify Item two, three, four, and twenty-one individually, and then the board consider the remaining items as one motion to approve.
Recommendation, need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If anybody wants any of those pulled out, we can pull them out. If not, we're going to do them in one group. It'll be, yeah, the budget. The transfers will be one, the budgets will be a separate item.
Correct.
So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? That motion carries for that. April?
Okay. So your first budget amendment is General Fund number thirteen. This is for last fiscal year, and this is to add a canteen revenue to the inmate canteen expenses for the jail.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, five oh. Next.
Okay, your second budget amendment tonight, it's Budget Amendment number twenty for the General Fund. It is last year, fiscal year, and this is the remaining expenses on the new commission, new kitchen in the Emerson Black Building, plus the expenses for the alternate kitchen in the Black Building. This is the remaining expenses.
Motion to approve the budget amendment, General Fund number twenty.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, five oh. Next.
The next budget amendment is the Fire Tax Fund, number eleven. This is the First Amendment for that fund this year. And this is the excess revenues that has been, that has been collected with fire tax for each district, and we need to pay those out for the last fiscal year.
Motion to approve. Okay.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, five oh. Thank you. April?
And then I'm going to skip down to the last budget amendment, so we can go ahead and get it out of the way. This is for a new LTV for Allegheny Motion, our public transportation system. It was budgeted last fiscal year, but was not received last fiscal year. So we need to add that to the budget for the current fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then we'll do the group of sixteen line item transfers, all different types from each department. All the money is available, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on any of those?
No questions. Motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes, that concludes you. Now, item number twenty-two. We have Allegheny County High School New Construction Funding with Michael Carter, and I think John Irwin has a statement to read first.
I have the following statement. The following statement has been prepared on behalf of the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners regarding the construction of the new high school. The grant funds received to fund the project and the first requests received on July the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four from the Allegheny County Board of Education for additional funding from Allegheny County to cover the additional costs associated with the project that exceed the grant money award. On September the twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, Allegheny Schools was awarded forty-seven million dollars grant through the twenty-two, twenty-three Needs-Based School Capital Fund. On April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, Allegheny County Schools was awarded an additional twelve million dollar grant through the twenty-three, twenty-four Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund, which is NBPSCVF. This brought the total amount of grant money awarded to Allegheny County to fifty-nine million dollars and reset the requirement per North Carolina General Statute one-one-five C dash five-four-six decimal one-two decimal pair in B that project construction must be initiated within twenty-four months of the award of grant funds. As such, the deadline for construction to begin is now Thursday, April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. When receiving grant funding from the state of North Carolina, there are guidelines and requirements that recipients must adhere to per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash one thirty-two, and I quote, "minimum number of bids for public contracts." Section A, no contract to which General Statute one forty-three dash one twenty-nine applies for construction or repairs shall be awarded by any board or governing body of the state or any subdivision thereof, unless at least three competitive bids have been received from reputable and qualified contractors regularly engaged in their respective lines of endeavor. Provided that if, after advertisement for bids as required by General Statute one forty-three dash one twenty-nine, not as many as three competitive bids have been received from reputable and qualified contractors regularly engaged in their respective lines of endeavor, said board or governing body of the state agency or of a county, city, board or governing body of the state agency or of a county, city, town, or other subdivision of the state shall again advertise for bids. And General Statute, North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter one-four-three dash one-oh-seven, if as a result of such second advertisement, not as many as three competitive bids from reputable and qualified contractors are received, such board or governing body may then let the contract to the lowest responsible bidder submitting a bid for such project even though only one bid is received. To the best of our knowledge, the Allegheny County Board of Education failed to comply with this requirement since the Board of Education has failed to provide the RFP for construction of the project requested by the Board of Commissioners. Each recipient that has been awarded a NBP SCF grant must enter into an agreement with North Carolina DPI detailing the use of grant funds. A portion of these requirements are as follows. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one-one-five C dash five-four-six decimal one-two, the recipient must have plans approved by DPI, and as of noon today, no plans had been approved by DPI. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one-one-five C dash five-two-one, the recipient must certify that the project site is owned in fee simple by the Board of Education. The Allegheny County Board of Education does not own a portion of the projected project. The Allegheny County Board of Education has failed to provide the following information to the Board of Commissioners, an exact dollar amount figured needed for the new high school construction, the contingencies for the construction, and how much are allocated for each, a list of the changes to the project that were decided on and approved to reduce the cost of the project. Finally, there is no deadline for completion of construction. Funding will not be forfeited unless construction fails to begin by Thursday, April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Mr. Chair, I request to begin the discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Chairman, I, I think Commissioner John Irwin summed it all up. I think that with that in mind, the Board of Commissioners must now consider the request from the school board regarding the proposed project.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I request that the motion be tabled until the DEQ permit has been provided, the DPI has approved the funds, and that a rebid be done under General Statute one-four-three decimal dash one-thirty-two and the DPI requirements. In conversation with DPI today, they said that they would not approve this project with one bid. Again, I would like to start the discussion, sir.
And you made that in form of a motion?
Yes, I did make that as a form of a motion, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Carter?
Just for clarification, Commissioner John Irwin, the, the clarification with one bid relates not to DPI, but the LGC.
Excuse me, LGC.
Anything else? Heather, any comments? We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion, if I may. This is for the general knowledge of the general public. Whenever the initial application was made, there was a requirement for local funding. However, under the guidelines of Article thirty-eight Bravo, Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund, at that time, Allegheny County did not meet the requirements for local funds. Our total property value was less than two billion dollars. At this time, our capital, our property exceeds two billion dollars. So I asked the question last Monday, with the approval of the grant in 2024, do we now fall under the, the local funds requirement? The answer is no. We go by the original, local funds requirement on the original grant, so that does not apply. That saved us five percent, but that would be moot because we're going to have to put in some money, and we know that. All right, project must be initiated. This is, again, is from the statute, within twenty-four months of the award of grant funds. There is no time limit. The money is there. So the information that has been placed on Facebook, the information that has been passed around is bogus. The money is there. As long as we turn one spade of dirt, we then have met the requirements to begin construction. Now, there are requirements that we have to submit some reports, which will not be a problem, I can assure you. I can tell you from my personal standpoint, we do not intend to let this money go away. But at the same time, we have requirements that this is done in accordance with state statutes, because if I read on in there, if information that is not correct is provided, it is grounds to remove the grant. If construction is started, and we've spent twenty-five billion dollars, and they pull those funds, the county's got to pay them back. Now, this was initiated, I will take the blame, because as I received the information that weekend, I started looking into this, and I sent a list of questions to the county manager. This got them started. Now, if anyone would like a copy of these documents, you can go to the county website, and you can submit a FOIA request, and you will receive a copy. If you would like to view them in the county office without getting a copy, they will be available for review. Now, we have been placed under pressure. It's not appreciated, but as I said personally, I will do any and everything possible so that this money does not go to someone else. I will let the other board members speak as to their commitment, but I, it is my belief that they agree with me, we are not going to let this money go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
I concur with John on that. We're, we're not going to let this money get by us. We just want to do it, take the right steps and do it the right way in a methodical, thought-out, fiduciary, responsible manner, because, you know, we know that we need a new school, and we know that we've been blessed with an awesome opportunity. We just want to do it the right way. And if I could suggest to the school and the board that maybe you guys set up a project coordinator for this and have a point person for this project, so we can all, you all can get us what you need, and we can get your approvals, and we can get this thing rolling, because, you know, I think we're all in favor of getting the school built. We just have to, we just have to go about it the right way. You know, we can't, I think if anybody were to walk into a bank and ask for a sizable loan, they got to have their ducks in a row. So we're just, we're just asking you to get these things and check them off the list, and come back to us, and we can roll.
Thank you. Greg?
I'm just like John and Michelle and all, we're all for the school. We just got to go about the right way and the cheapest way for the taxpayers of the county.
Thank you. Timmy?
Yes, I'm just to add to that. I know one of the things that we found, which I was surprised about, this DPI has not approved the plan that the architectural is presenting to them. And all these different things, I think it's just the amount of nailing things down and getting things right, because we have spent the last probably year or maybe more trying to fix messes where people made decisions quickly, and then now we're having to go back, and, and I, I think that's, I think that's where we are. We need to get everything right and then move forward with this.
I, I agree with the rest of the board. We're, we're not going to let fifty-nine million dollars go back to the state. Like Michelle said and everybody else, we just have to do it the proper way. The school needs to provide the information that was requested. We have to follow the general statutes. Sometimes you may not like the general statutes, but you have no choice. You got to follow them. Heather, do you have anything to add? Mr. Carter?
Chairman, I call the motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second on the floor to table this to a different, different time period. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor at the table, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries to table. Thank you. That concludes Section C. We move right along to Section D, county managers' comments.
Chairman, members of the board, tonight I have no county manager comments, so that should be pretty quick.
Thank you. We'll start with Timmy tonight.
I'm a lucky one. Just to add to that, you know, just, I think everybody's in the mindset of trying to figure this out and try to figure out a way to move forward with this, but we do want to get it right. And we also, all of us sitting here, when we deal with little, small amounts of money, we might not look, think about it as, as seriously, but we should, but this money's not all our money. I mean, we, we're, we're making decisions for all the people of Allegheny of like how we want to go about doing this, and it, you know, that's, I figured out my taxes that I pay, and that's point zero 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 one two five. It's like tiny. So I, I think the county, when they think about it as people, I think they can appreciate the, you know, the trying to dig through everything and work through everything, turn over all the rocks, try to figure out what's the best way. I think that's our job, you know, that's our job, and I, I take it seriously that that's, that's where we're at right now, and I, I just think that's where we are, and that's, that's what we want to try to do. But at the same time, I was digging through some things and, and trying to think as a whole, as a county, and I was going back, and we, you know, we're all members automatically of the North Carolina County Commissioners Association, and they have a lot of resources, and that's really, that's really good to go back and check our county, how we stack up with other counties. And I was really taken back when I look at Medicaid population in Allegheny at thirty percent, and this is, this is all in part of us as we try to make decisions on how we spend Allegheny County money. You know, that to me is like, I'm like, I can't believe that, but we, but that's reality. You know, I don't like it, but it's reality. You know, we had, I was looking at the older population, age sixty-five plus was twenty-seven percent, and then we got a, a, up at the cog, they did, did a study, and in Allegheny, we're, we're right around fourteen percent of that, twenty-seven percent of that sixty-five plus is poverty or below. So all of these are realities of our county. Like I said, we don't like it, but it's the same time, that's, we had to put all of that in the big ball and try to figure out what is the best way forward, and when we make, and this, this is one of the biggest decisions that Allegheny County's ever made to date. And, and like I said, you know, I think, I think through what we've had to deal with for the last year of a couple, a few things that's been done really quickly, handshake, maybe not thinking through everything, has created a lot of grief, and it's created a lot of extra work for your county employees and to try to fix that, and even the state's got after us, like you need to fix these things. So we do not want to, as John had mentioned, all the different, you know, restrictions, and, you know, we need to make sure all that stuff's taken care of, and then when we do move forward, we're not backing up. So, and however, however, how that may be, but the point is, we're all on the same page of that. We do not want to send fifty-nine million dollars back to the state. We're going to try to figure out how we can accommodate to where we can go, move forward and, and move forward with this project. That's it.
Brad, no comment? Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I, I mean, I echo what Timmy says. This is the biggest project ever to happen in this county, and I don't see how the, the Board of Education can ask us for this dollar amount without providing, you know, what, what the dollar amount is for, number one, and not coming to us with approved plans from DPI. I mean, those plans, it's been two million dollars spent on those plans, and they're sitting down there in Raleigh, and they haven't even given it the green light at DPI. So, you know, again, we're not saying no. We're just saying that you need to get your ducks in a row and bring it to us, and, you know, we're, we're going to try to make this thing work, because we're not going to let fifty-nine million get by us, because we'll never get it again. And we don't want to be out of statute with these, these bid requirements either. And yes, the only thing that in reality that is lost tonight is the contractor that bid on this may not hold his price. That's really the only thing lost. You know, as John stated in his, in his letter, as long as we turn one shovel of dirt by April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, no money goes back. So we have a little bit of time to try to get some more bidders in on this and lower the price. And I realize that we're taking a chance by the contractor not, the one contractor not holding the price for us, but, you know, I just didn't see how we could move forward tonight with a yes until we get those DPI plans approved and have some dollar figures. You know, if I were to walk into a bank and ask for a loan, I need a million dollars. You need a million dollars on, on the penny a million dollars? What for? That's all we're asking for, is just some explanation of these funds. So, and tonight, we remedied one, one situation. We've already gotten this letter approved tonight, so we can give the Board of Education permission to go forward with this project. So that speaks volumes right there, that we have every intention on moving forward with this, and we took that off their plate, got that taken care of. So you just have to understand our, our responsibility to the taxpayers. We want to do this right. We do not want this messed up. We do not want any chance of this money being pulled or taken away. So just give us some patience, give the Board of Education some patience to get this all together and make it work the right way. and make it work the right way.
Thank you. John?
One of the things that upsets me very quickly, whenever the, uh, whenever the second grant was sent in, there was an agreement page. It was signed by the, uh, the, uh, Chair of the Board of Education and also the county commissioners. One of the things that it said, we would submit a document within sixty days. That document has not been filed. If somebody in Raleigh wants to get their back up, this money could be pulled simply because we have not complied with the requirement. It, it is explicit. It is maddening whenever we schedule a work session and all of a sudden robo calls go out to come, come and put pressure on the county commissioners. We have requirements that we have gotta meet. I am advised that one reason why there was only one bid was because of the way the RFP was worded. Arch contractors would not take it unless it was construction manager at risk. I believe we need a work session with the, uh, Board of Education and get this ironed out so that, uh, we can get that RFP out there, get three bids in, hopefully more than three, and we can look at it. Now, one of the questions that I requested, uh, in my message to the county manager was, uh, would like to see the RFQ, Request for Qualifications for the Architect. And that is based upon the statement that was made during the work session on, I believe, July the sixteenth. This is the architect we always use. Well, if you always use the same one, how do you know if anybody that is either more qualified or less expensive is out there? Every time we have done a project with this county manager, an RFQ has gone out and it has gone out to the general public so that we could get multiple replies back. Am I not correct, sir?
Sir.
So, the RFP, North Carolina statute says three bids. I would hate to start a project and the state of North Carolina suddenly come back, well, and, and they'd say, well, where's the three bids? You only got one. It's gonna be embarrassing to us and believe me with the, uh, with the things that we are confronting right now that have happened in the past. The public is not aware of it and I had blonde hair whenever we started out with some of this and the county manager had a mustache. So these are the things that we are looking at. We are doing our due diligence, I feel, because we have to, so that we don't get caught with our hands in the cookie jar. The only, the other thing that I will say is piss poor prior planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on mine. And that's exactly what came to my mind whenever we suddenly had to have this thing done. And especially whenever we were not provided all the information that we had requested. We were doing our due diligence. You can cuss me because I'm the one that brought it up. I'm the one that got the, uh, people looking at it. I don't regret it. This is part of my background. In the Marine Corps, the frequency manager, I did not follow Marine Corps orders, orders, uh, whenever I was doing frequency management. I was guided by an international treaty that was ratified by the Senate of the United States of America. So anytime I goofed up, it was an international incident. I look at the minutia because if I don't judge doubting, we'll end up with it because there's someone out there that will sue us. So, Mr. Chair, I will get off my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you for those words. You know, it's, it's been said numerous times at numerous meetings, we as commissioners do not intend to see this money go back. There's a procedure, there's a policy that has to be followed. You have to follow the, the law and that's what we're trying to do. Timmy's mentioned it, I think Mr. Carter's mentioned it, that we're trying to correct things that were done twenty-five and thirty years ago with just a handshake. And we have a sitting attorney who keeps us on track and we have to follow those rules. So Michelle said it, give us time, give the school board time to get all the information together. Give them time to get their policies, their commitments, get, give them time to do all of that and then give us time to, uh, to make that decision. And I, just speaking for myself, that decision will be to go ahead with the schools, but we have to do it in the proper way. With that, Mr., uh, Mr. Carter, any other comments? Heather? And you? And April?
Okay, I wish you to go into closed session, your, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
We have a request for closed session pursuant to G S one forty-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one dot closed session permitted purposes of personnel. Thank you all. Need of motion, all in favor?
Well, I would ask that myself and the county attorney be present during that closed session and to excuse April and Danielle.
Fred, need to get-
Okay.